...for families. We know through the course of the pandemic that, you know, I represent a very hard-working-class community. And I think it's really important that we provide really quality programming for young people and their families to enjoy together that doesn't break the bank. And they don't have to leave their neighborhood in order to enjoy it.
So much fun. My daughter loves it. We come here a lot, all the time, maybe three, four times a week. So it's amazing having this chance to be here and enjoy this event.
This free event means a lot because where I stay, there's no pool. So when we get a pool, soon we get a chance to watch a movie that everyone enjoys. Family and friends come out. It's pretty awesome.
For many, for many families, having a swimming pool is not a luxury that they can afford. And so to be able to enjoy this in this way, it's a special experience that they won't forget.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Have a good time, guys. Enjoy the movie.
I just want to say thank you to Monica for making this event happen. It's been amazing. We're actually really excited to see Luca within the next two weeks. We're having another event here, and we're so excited to come back.
If you haven't had movie nights in CD7, then you've missed out. We only do it like this in CD7.
Founded in the 1920s by the Japanese-American community, the Japanese Union Church in Los Angeles was designated a cultural historical monument in 1986. What is an example of the layering of Los Angeles history and a witness to displacements and social changes is today a multimedia arts center for everyone to enjoy?
I'm so happy to be able to talk about the Japanese Union Church of Los Angeles, which was cultural historical monument number 314. It was designated a cultural historical monument in 1986. This is a wonderful example of the layering of Los Angeles history.
This 14,000-square-foot building is an adaptive reuse project of the Little Tokyo Service Center, where we converted the historic Union Church into the multimedia arts center that it is today.
So the Japanese-American community founded the church in the 1920s. They had been living in Los Angeles for many years before that, but they came together and started the church in 1923. They were able to hire a very prominent architect at the time. His name was H.M. Patterson. And he had designed other churches. And he decided neoclassical architectural design. So it looks very traditional. It does not have any of the elements of what we consider Japanese culture or the aesthetics of Japanese culture. Fast forward to later on in American history, when the Japanese internment occurred in the 1940s. And so this church became part of another layer of Los Angeles history. So sadly, the Japanese were removed from Little Tokyo, sent to internment camps. And during this period of World War II, African-Americans were coming to Los Angeles from the South. And this church became a sanctuary for them. They were coming here to work. Some of them lived in the area. In fact, my own grandfather lived on San Pedro, a few blocks from here, in the 1940s during that period. So Bronzeville was a time when many African-Americans came in after Japanese were displaced because of the war. And they started their own businesses in some cases. There was a jazz scene here, music. But that period only lasted for a short time. And when, after the war, the Japanese-American community came back to Little Tokyo, they were able to reestablish their community institutions, including this church.
Today, this building is home to three Asian-American Pacific Islander arts organizations: Visual Communications, L.A. Art Corps, and East West Players.
It's a wonderful example of a space that brings people together for performances. Not only Asian-American performances, but all different ethnic groups have come here to use the space. The arts have a platform here. So it's really important to preserve these places and share their histories so that people know that people from all over the world and indigenous people have been in Los Angeles for hundreds of years.
In this week's feature story, our own Maria Hall Brown sits down with the executive director of L.A. Family Housing, Stephanie Klaske-Gamer. We discuss their core mission to transition people out of homelessness and poverty and the future for the organization at this crucial point in time. Let's hear her story.
I am delighted to be joined today by the executive director of L.A. Family Housing, Stephanie Klaske-Gamer. So nice to be here.
Welcome. We're so thrilled to have you here at the Ermas Family Campus at L.A. Family Housing. L.A. Family Housing remains rooted in that understanding that there are multiple solutions to end homelessness in people's lives, from the immediate, short-term intervention to get people indoors off the streets. But ultimately, to permanently end homelessness for them, they need an apartment that is safe, affordable, and accessible.
But there's a lot more than that besides the permanent housing. So what are the focuses?
So L.A. Family Housing, at the core of all of our work, is rooted in the mission to help families and individuals transition out of homelessness and poverty.
You know, being an optimistic person, you obviously are, or else you wouldn't be dedicated to this field for so long. Where do your hopes and dreams lie?
My hopes and dreams lie in changing the narrative. I want people to feel confident that they've seen success. They've seen success in one person who they used to see outside of their grocery store every week, who moved into interim housing, moved into their own home. I think our best move is developing more housing. Our best move is supportive housing across Los Angeles. Because with that, we will see success. We will see people moving off of our streets. But we have to change the narrative that nothing's getting done. Because, as you said, I'm an optimistic person, but I also rely on data. There is a ton getting done, and there are thousands of people's lives who are transitioning out of homelessness and poverty every day. We just need to share their stories.
Learn how to make sourdough bread from an expert. Bring your toddlers to an interactive outdoor performance or enjoy the third live music show of the Skirball Summer Concerts. All this up next on Things to Do.
Breadmaking became a top hobby during the pandemic. And now's your chance to get in on the baking trend. Learn how to make sourdough starter and bread at the West Los Angeles Regional Library with a free in-person workshop. Bree Wakeland, a food preservationist who regularly leads workshops around the city, will be teaching participants how to successfully make sourdough starter and bread, which they'll be able to take home with them. The Sour Dough Bread Workshop is recommended for teens and adults and will take place in the community room in the West Los Angeles Library on Sunday, August 7, at 1:30 p.m. For more details, check out lapl.org/events. Attention families and parents of young kids in Los Angeles. The Arroyo Seco Regional Library is holding an End of Summer Celebration in the Park. Bring your babies and toddlers to this free, in-person storytelling event where they will enjoy an interactive outdoor performance of Snook Nook and the Robot Puppet Show, face painting, and more fun activities. Bring your own picnic blanket to join in on this fun event. The End of Summer Celebration in the Park will take place at the Eagle Rock Recreation Center on Saturday, August 6, at 10 a.m. For more information, visit lapl.org/events. Do you feel like grooving to live music that tells stories of humanity? Then you should check out the free concert of Nevish Mountain, the boundary-pushing bluegrass Americana band which shares the beauty of Jewish culture with the world. This concert is part of the 25th Summer Concert Season at the Skirball, which brings together an eclectic lineup from around the world to Los Angeles. Everyone is welcome to attend this free concert, where first come, first served walk-up tickets will be available. The Nevish Mountain Concert will take place at the Skirball Cultural Center on Thursday, August 4, at 8 p.m., with doors and galleries opening at 6:30 p.m. For more details about the concert and the venue, visit skirball.org/programs. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's it for this edition. I'm Natalia Bilbao. And from all of us here at L.A. this week, thank you so much for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and we're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. this week.
Mitch O'Farrell here, president pro temp of the L.A. City Council. We are ready to begin the meeting. We are beginning this council meeting. Mr. Clark, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Bloomingfield. Bonin. Buscaino. Absent. Sadio. De León. Harris Dawson. Corretz. Krikorian. Absent. Lee. Marchinez. O'Farrell.
President.
Price. Absent. Ramon. Rodriguez. Eleven members in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes of July 27, 2022.
Councilmember Corretz moves, and Councilmember Bloomingfield seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Lee moves, and Councilmember Harris Dawson seconds. Next.
Mr. President, Item 1 is an item notice for public hearing. Items 2 through 17 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 18 through 25 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item 26 is a closed session item for which a public hearing has been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before us. Members, do you wish to call any of these items special? Seeing as there are no items called special today, Mr. Clerk, do we have any cards?
Yes, Mr. President. There are cards on Items 1, 7 through 9, and 18 through 25.
Great, and what items are now available that haven't been called special that we can vote on?
The council may now vote on Items 2 through 6 and 10 through 17.
All right, well, let's vote on Items 2 through 6, and what's the other again?
10 through 17.
And 10 through 17. Let's vote on those items. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you, and... Mr. City Attorney, would you please explain the speaking rules to members of the public? We're going to vote on 26 first, all right? Closed session, Item 26. All right, would you like to speak on that, Mr. City Attorney? Your mic's off.
Mr. President, in the case entitled Laura Montilla versus City of Los Angeles, it's all, there's a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement.
All right, then we are now ready to vote on that item. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you, I believe now we are ready to proceed with public comment. So, thank you. So, the items that are open for public comment are Items 1 and 18 through 25. You can sign up for the items. You have one minute per item, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment. We do ask that you speak to the items before beginning general public comment. Terrific, thank you. So, are we ready for our first speaker? Yes? Hello? All right, we are going to start today with Dr. Critical Truth Bay. You have general public comment and Items 7 and 8, so you'll have one minute for general public comment, and you have several actual items on the agenda, so three minutes for your items. Please step forward and please begin.
Actually, Items 7 and 8, although we're holding them, are not open for general, are not open for public comment, so I believe we just have one minute for the speaker.
Could you please repeat that? I couldn't hear you, Mr. City Attorney.
Yeah, can you repeat that, please? Because I signed up for 19 to 24.
If you signed up for 19 through 24, you have three minutes for those. Items 2 through 17 aren't available, but 19 through 24 is, so we'll give you three minutes for 19 through 24, and then a minute for general.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Board. So, you have the reappointment for Commission for Community Family Affairs, Community Family Services. You have Rashad Rucker Trapp, Loretta Lopez, Henderon, Deborah Marcus, and Vicky Curry for the Status of Women, and the mayor's appointee, Herbsima Cachadorian, for Human Relations Council. I would like to first and foremost congratulate these reappointees, or reappointees-to-be, but I first want to address the First Amendment for the citizens who feel strongly about issues. When they come to attend a city council meeting, those voice should be concerned. On Friday, July 1st, the powers that be unfortunately did not have three of the homeless individuals that came to speak from Skid Row, they were cut out from public comment.
Sorry, Dr. Toothpick, it sounds like you're going on to general. Do you want to finish up the three items?
No, I'm not, I'm putting it all together. I just introduced 19 to 23, Vicky Curry.
So, if you're going on to not talk about 19 through 20, which sounds like you are, or 25, we're going to set the clock for a minute. Right, because you clearly were not talking on the items that are open, so do you want to talk about items?
Yeah, we're talking about the characters of these reappointees, that's why I named them. They all go in together as far as your behavior in allowing people to do public comment, especially those who are homeless.
I got to tell you, that's really not connected to it, what happened on Friday, so let's send you to general public comment, and then you can talk about whatever you feel like.
Commission for Community and Family Services does have something to do with housing and homelessness, so moving forward. In the First Amendment, there is a protected right for people to come and speak. Yolanda Adams, who's been on Skid Row for 35 years, L.A. Times covered her story on Monday. She was here Friday, July 1st. She signed up early, and then you allowed 27 speakers to speak, including Chad Kroeger and JT talking about abortion rights and celibacy. Yet, the people who are in Skid Row, which is a half a mile, that came to speak, 35 years, living in a tent, you didn't even allow her to take one minute to speak because Nori Martinez had to go and barbecue. That's unacceptable. If you want to help the homeless, the first thing is allow them to have public comment and let them speak. Then you can say how great your solutions are while you got yelled at because the people didn't speak, who are living in tents while you go to your mini mansions. Unacceptable. I want us to do better.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Arnold Sachs. Arnold Sachs, you have one minute for general public comment and three minutes for your multiple items.
So, let's start with the items, Mr. Sachs. We'll set the clock for three minutes, and the items that were open were 1 and 18 through 25. I'm not sure which ones you signed up for, but it was multiples in there. So, are you ready, Mr. Sachs?
Yeah, I'm ready. Are you ready, sir?
Yes, we'll start the clock.
Oh, that's great. So, am I starting on my items? Item 19 refers to animal welfare. So, I brought in this article I got from the ASPCA, and I'm really concerned, there's a lot of items that I've picked up that have these small Rs by them. This one has a small R, and the letters are different, and I'm wondering what these small Rs mean. I'm concerned they might refer to Ridley Thomas, because he's the one who shut down the whole government a couple of years ago, and it's very concerning. Number 18 refers to a snow ticket, but it doesn't refer to the color of the snow, and the reason I bring that up is because Frank Zappa was famous for writing a song about, "Don't eat that yellow snow." So, I'm wondering if that's the yellow comment. Number 20 refers to the affairs, the civil rights and equity, but it's not end equity, it's plus equity. So, we've gone to pluses and minuses on a lot of these committees, and I'm wondering why we're so concerned about equity instead of being concerned about equality. Somebody mentioned something about the right to speak as free speech, but it seems that Brown Act violations go hand in hand all the time.
Can we get back to the items?
I'm referring to item number... Building on the Crenshaw Line, and I'm wondering why the Crenshaw Corporation is building the Crenshaw Line, and the Crenshaw Construction Authority built the Aqua Line. So, why isn't there not an authority building the Crenshaw Corporation line? It's a corporation. Who owns that corporation? We don't know, and that involves Metro. So, I brought these maps in that show clearly this M is not an M. You can clearly see it's not connected, and somebody's stealing people's tax dollars. They've been stealing it forever, since Measure M was made, and nobody gives a flying fuck. And why is that? We don't know. All I know is that there's a lot of problems here in L.A. It's a cesspool, and people keep talking about Skid Row, but they failed to mention the Affordable Care Act and the 15,000 people that were signed up.
Can we get back on the items, or go to general, Mr. Sachs? Up to you.
Number 1 also refers to codifying laws, so why aren't the laws being codified? It's the letter of law and the intent of the law, and Prop 215 was codified, it took away rights from gig workers.
Okay, you can go into general, Mr. Sachs.
Well, general public comment. So, we have 26 items on this agenda? No community involvement. Why is that? When are you going to get community involvement involved? We have SEQA. We need to update that SEQA laws. It's Quality Air, it hasn't been updated since 1970. We banned straws by the state, and they're back in use. We banned plastic bags, they're all over the place. Here's a plastic bag from the 99 cent store. There's no 99, there's no cent sign, they're selling items for over 99 cents. Why is that fucking allowed? Who inspects these products? $640 million in the Affordable Care Act. Mark Ridley Thomas didn't want to pay. He took that goddamn money and built the stadium in Las Vegas. They signed up 15,000 homeless people. Is it homeless people or homelessness? You have a committee here. There's a lot of crap.
All right, our next...
Thank you, Mr. Sachs.
Our next speaker is Candido. Candido, you are up, and you have three minutes for your multiple cards, and one minute... Sir, it's... Yes? I'm not clear in what it is you're handing out. All right, we'll take it, we'll take it. We got it, thank you. Now, Mr. Candido is next, Mr. Sachs, so please...
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sachs. Would you, please go sit down so Mr. Candido gets a turn to speak.
Hello, Candido. You have three minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment.
Good morning, council members. First of all, before I speak, I want to apologize to the police officers. We got a little out of hand the last time we met, but when you, as the young lady said, when you have homeless people, advocates here, trying to fix our streets, and people who serve us, who are supposed to represent us, are off to other places, people get mad, people get mad, but I want to apologize to you, all you officers, because I've been here since 1989, and I've never been disrespectful. So, we appreciate what you're doing. I'm talking about...
So, we'll consider this general, keep going.
No, I talked to, I want to talk about the police. I signed up for items that concern the police, equipment, all the facilities, et cetera. We're all in favor of that, but again, why can't we just take time to apologize when we're wrong? Why can't we just do that? Why can't you do that, sir? How many times have you denied me my right to speak?
So, Mr. Candido, so we're not going to have this conversation. Do you want to talk about the items? Do you want to continue with general? Those are the options. Okay, we'll start your...
On that day, folks, there was a man right here who represents the 6th District, who's a neighborhood councilman. For 15 years, he made sure food went out to the food banks by himself. Five days a week, he would clean the food and get it out to them. Mr. Camara, he's over here somewhere, and yet, when the 6th District wanted, they wouldn't let him speak. For 20 years, he collected toys. He went to the K-Marts, the Walmarts, everything, and collected toys, didn't ask the fire department, and he would make sure the 6th District got those things. And yet, he stood here like a child, begging with his hand up, just wanting to speak, and he's a law-abiding person who, all he wants to do is help. Yet, this council and a certain leader wouldn't let that. Why? When that person is serving your district, and you know what he does today? He goes over to the demolition division, he cleans the plaques of all the officers and all the things that are placed up there. Why? Because he only cares about all of us. He cares about what happens to all of us, and yet, this council and a certain individual wouldn't let him speak, wouldn't let him speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and stop interrupting me.
All right, our next speaker is Dr. Critigel RT. If you haven't yet spoken, Dr. Critigel RT? Oh, yes, you have, thank you. All right, next we have John Camara. John Camara? And general public comment, Mr. Camara, one minute.
Good morning, council members. Good morning, council members. As a fifth-generation Angelino, I have always felt it was a privilege to share my concerns about issues affecting our great city. Look what's happening at the Sixth Street Bridge. Shame on those of you that would do damage to the bridge and bring shame to our city all over the world. Excuse my language, but you guys are assholes. I apologize for my words, but the shame you're bringing to our city is inexcusable. You don't give a damn about our city, and we're not just going to stand by and watch you guys ruin the city I love. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
All right, our next speaker is Lionel Maris. Lionel Maris, you fill out for general public comment, one minute.
Yes, my name is Lionel Maris from Sun Valley. I'm here because I feel that my community in the Northeast San Fernando Valley is neglected by city council. We don't get as much as attention as other parts of L.A. We have a homelessness crisis. I've reached out to other neighborhood councils, city council, nonprofits, begging for help because I've seen unhoused neighbors out on the streets suffering, and we need more resources in my community. I don't, it's not fair for other communities to get more attention where my community does not get as much attention as others. It's not fair. We pay taxes, and we need more assistance in my community, and we need more shade trees, more bicycle infrastructure. The sixth bridge, the bicycle lane, it's not, that's not a good way to protect bicyclists. I mean, I've been there, it's just, it's a waste of money, and that's why so many people are angry. That's why they're lashing out against De Leon, Puskaino, and because people are frustrated. I'm frustrated too, but I try to be civil, I try not to curse language, but I do get frustrated, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Olivia Ariano. Olivia Ariano for general public comment. And Ms. Ariano, you have one minute for general public comment.
Hi, my name is Olivia Ariano, and I have an application since April 26th from Kingdom Warriors Foundation, turn my application to Losla, and I would like to know what's my next step to get my assistance with my housing. I'm a hard worker, and I would like to help people, but I need to have a stable housing to do that. And I also agree with the homelessness. It's very, very terrible how this city of Los Angeles is becoming. There's a lot of people that need help. We should all stand up and like, continue to help the homeless, and that's all I have.
Ma'am, if you need help with your particular housing need, please step to the side, and someone will approach you, and we can figure out how we can assist you in what council district you're in, et cetera.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does that include, does that conclude our public speaker for today? I think it does. All right, so colleagues, we will now close public comment for today, and then I believe that brings us items that we can vote on today. Would you please go through those items, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. The council may now vote on Items 1, 7 through 9, and 18 through 25.
All right, so Items 1, 7, 8, 9, and 18 through 25 are now ready to vote on, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, what is before us now?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
All right, posted and referral, that shall be the order, and I believe we are now ready for announcements. All right, colleagues, we have an announcement from Mr. Krikorian, I believe.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, about eight years ago, I began a program called the San Fernando Valley Youth Leadership Academy, and this was an idea to bring in some of the best and the brightest of high school students from the San Fernando Valley, to give them an opportunity to see the way city government works, to kind of get behind the curtain and get a better sense of what opportunities there may be for them to serve the public in public service, and to be more effective as advocates for the things that they care about. And unfortunately, COVID, over the last couple of years, prevented us from continuing the program during that. prevented us from continuing the program during that time. But this year, we came back and we came back strong with the largest class of high school students that we've ever had. And I'm very pleased to introduce them to you now. If I can ask everybody to please stand up for a moment. This is Sophie, Vincent, Natalie, Andrew, Victoria, Michael, Elisa, Lori, Scarlett, Leanna, Nelefer, Allison, Ara, Vanessa, Aviva, Janaya, and Jacob from the Buckley School, the Rose and Alex Pilibos Armenian School, Harvard Westlake, North Hollywood High School, Ulysses Grant High School, Providence High School, the AGBU Menugian Demergerian School, Milken Community School, Cesar Chavez Learning Academy, Valley Torah High School, and Oakwood Secondary School. And these young people, for the last two weeks, have come in every single day to meet with some of our leaders of Los Angeles, of the Departments of Recreation and Parks, the Police Department, the Fire Department, sanitation. They met with Metro staff as well. Who am I missing? Am I missing anybody? Those are some of the many experiences that they had, touring city facilities and getting to interact with the leaders of those departments. And I'm very confident that someday, very soon, some of us will still be here to be able to see them taking their positions as future leaders of our city. So I'm very proud of all of you. Congratulations on completing this program, and we all wish you all the best of continuing success from here on out. All right, wave for TV, guys, and then we'll take you in the back a little bit later for some pictures.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian, and thank you so much. Consider, to all of the youth gathered today, consider us an additional support system for your future endeavors. Congratulations and thank you for joining us in council today. And Mr. Krikorian, do you have another announcement?
I do. And as cheerful and happy as I was to make that announcement, Mr. President, the next one fills me with tremendous mixed emotions because almost 17 years ago, when I was a rookie member of the State Assembly, I met a young man who was not much older than the folks who are here with the Leadership Academy, who was still a college student, but showed tremendous promise and capability. And he came to work for me as a part-time office assistant in Sacramento and moved very quickly into policymaking positions from where he, where is he? So Matt Hale moved very quickly from the position of this part-time college student who was eager to get things done to one of the leading policy advisors that I had in the office and soon became one of the leading policy thought drivers in Sacramento. He was instrumental in important legislation that we advanced to modernize California's trademark laws, to protect intellectual property owners from copyright infringement and piracy, to fight against the dark money influence that had polluted so much of our independent expenditure campaigns and ballot measure campaigns. He was instrumental in advancing a bill to protect seniors living in residential care facilities from abuse and trauma. And perhaps most notably, Matt was the tip of the spear in getting AB 64 passed through the legislature, the 33% RPS renewable portfolio standard bill for the entire state of California. After more than a year of work of bringing stakeholders together throughout the state to try to bring consensus around a commitment to renewable energy, Matt's work really fundamentally changed the way the state of California thought about renewable energy and our future. And although that bill was vetoed by then-Governor Schwarzenegger, it really did lay the groundwork for important advances like Mr. De Leon's SB 50 and other progress that really fundamentally changed our commitment to renewable energy and climate change reduction. So when I was elected to the Assembly, I was thrilled that Matt made the decision to uproot his life and to come down to Los Angeles with me. He has served in progressive positions in my office since the first minute that I sat down in this seat, even before, actually, even before I was sworn in, and moved up from our policy team to become our Deputy Chief of Staff. And in his role here, of course, has played, has touched just about every important policy initiative that this council has done over the last decade because we've been involved in the policymaking of it. Matt's always been central to that effort, but also because of his role in the Budget Committee and being our leader with our budget efforts over the last decade now that I've served as Chair. And in that role, he's, you know, always made an effort to uplift all of you and your staffs to ensure that your needs were met in the budget, when it couldn't be met, to figure out how we could figure out a way to meet your needs. And he's always been there to be able to assist your staff as well and to mentor younger staff members and bring them along as he has in my team. And then perhaps even, as noteworthy as his work on the Budget Committee is his work on LA 100. Because seven years ago, Matt helped to initiate this process when we introduced the motion to get it started. And he's been there every day to see it through, to make sure that DWP stayed on track, to make sure that the National Renewable Energy Lab was working on this, to refine the work product. And now, as a result, this city will be at 100% carbon-free energy by 2035. We will do that, and that's thanks to the work that Matt Hale initiated. But even more than all that, Matt has been one of my dearest friends and most important staff members and advisors and a mentor even to me sometimes. And I can't say enough things about the mark that he has left on this city. So I'm pleased to tell you, he's not leaving the city, but he is leaving my office. And he will be moving over to DWP, where in that new position, he will continue to work with each of your offices and be responsive to our needs when it comes to DWP matters. So I just wanna say thank you to Matt on behalf of all of the members of the City Council, all of the residents of the 2nd Council District, and all of the people of the City of Los Angeles for the incredible mark that you've left here in the City Council of Los Angeles.
And Mr. Krikorian, a few of us would like to say a few things about Matt before he recedes into the background. So Matt, please step forward again.
People never recede into the background, but yes, please.
So please step forward again, Matt. We have some colleagues who would like to say a few things in your regard. Mr. De Leon.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Krikorian, I'm gonna just echo much of what you just eloquently articulated with regards to Matt's person. I know that when I won in the primary, it was a city council member-elect, and Madam President had yet to make the committee assignments. And even before I was assigned the Budget Committee, you had reached out with Matt to give us a primer, if you will, and understanding the intricacies of the city budget. And that's something that I was always deeply appreciative of, having a sort of a breakdown budget 101 with regards to the city. Having served on the Budget Committee up in Sacramento, but understanding that the process is different, the dynamics are different, revenues are different here. It really gave me a better understanding, you know, of the city budget than having the honor and the opportunity to serve actually on the Budget Committee under your tutelage, Mr. Chairman. The Budget Committee has been fantastic. A couple of things. One is that this is a huge, huge loss for the city of Los Angeles, in particular for the legislative branch, the Budget Committee, because the work that you have produced is outstanding unquestionably. You do have to have a true understanding of the numbers, the revenues, what your commitments are, the political, you know, applications and considerations. And ultimately, at the end of the day, how do you produce a budget that's balanced on time and not gonna dig us into a hole or our credit rating is gonna be, you know, severely impacted? But at the same time, understanding that we need to deal with the human condition of constituents every single day. You have been a pillar of knowledge and understanding. I wanna just thank you from the bottom of my heart, you know, for your strong commitment, you know, to the city, to the legislative branch. And quite frankly, you know, I also, I know you engage more with my staff and vice versa. But I also listen to what they say, and I conclude with the same thing. You're just an awfully nice guy. You're a really nice guy, not imperious, you know, with a sense of power, you know, over a very powerful committee, that is the Budget Committee. You're an awfully nice guy, who's very smart, who, you know, has provided sound, you know, advice, tries to help members figure out, how can we get there, you know, if it's possible, you know, given their circumstances? So I just wanna say, we very much appreciate you. We wish you the very best. We're saddened that you're leaving, you know, Mr. Krikorian, knowing that Paul Krikorian is a budget hawk, you know, for every single penny. You know, had you given the damn man a raise, maybe he wouldn't be leaving, Paul. You know, maybe you were too hawkish with that budget, you know? But I wish you the very best at DWP. Be well, my friend. Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. De Leon. Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Matt, I just, I wanted to echo some of what Kevin just finished speaking of, but I just wanted to also say my thanks. You know, being one of the newer members of the Budget Committee, my team was very heavily reliant and appreciative of the support that you provided, and it enabled us to also find success on the committee and just incredibly grateful for your service and thankful that you're not gonna be that far away, that we will be able to continue to count on you and that residents will have a very trusted, intelligent resource at the Department of Water and Power, which is much needed. And, you know, again, you're an incredible resource, not just obviously to the member that you, you know, you served and had the pleasure of working so closely with over the course of many, many years, but as well to all of us and to our staffs. And so for that, I just wanted to rise and say thank you so much for your service here to our council, to our city, and thank you for committing yourself to your continued service to the people of Los Angeles. But thank you for everything that you've done for us.
Thank you.
Mr. Blumenfield.
Just wanted to quickly add on, as the Vice Chair of the Budget Committee, I've gotten to work closely with you, and you've been just professional, smart, really wonderful the way that you've helped guide the committee. So I just wanted to thank you for that. Appreciate all the great work that you have done and look forward to working with you at the DWP.
And Mr. Keretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add my voice to the chorus. I served on Budget Committee for 10 years, and you were a great ally and help to myself and my office and always smart and always helpful and always a nice guy to deal with. So I think just about every quality that one would look for, you possess and used it to do great good, and we certainly are appreciative, not just my office, but the whole council and everyone who knows about your work. Just sorry that you're leaving a little early, but you've done some great stuff over the years.
And Matt, let me just say that you, we've all been offended from your expertise, all of us around this horseshoe and all of our staff members. And it's because of your intelligence and, as I said, your expertise, but your generosity in word and deed. And the beauty is that we get to keep benefiting from your abilities because you're gonna be the Director of Governmental Affairs, I believe, if that's roughly your title. And as Chair of the Energy, Climate Change, Environmental Justice, and River Committee, my office gets to work directly with you. So you get to benefit this entire committee, and we're gonna continue reaping the benefits of your abilities. So that's an incredible way to pay it forward, and all of Los Angeles is gonna benefit from that. So thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Krikorian, for having an amazing staff member in Matt Hale, and we wish you much success in your next venture. Thank you so much. And I understand Ms. Martinez would like to say a few words.
Mr. President, is my mic on? Thank you, Mr. President. Matt, I think one thing that has to be said that isn't said often enough is how incredibly difficult these last three years have become. I think early on during the pandemic in 2020, we were all freaking out about how to keep us safe in this building, but more importantly, how to keep Los Angeles open and whether the federal government was gonna bail us out or not. I think a lot of us spent a lot of time together, more than usual. But nevertheless, I think Matt was one of those individuals who was not only coming collective, but actually showed up with solutions and really held us together. So for that, Matt, I wanna thank you because you are really one of the most smartest people I have ever worked with. And I wanna tell you that I think not only are you smart, but you're considerate of others, and you're incredibly encouraging of women in particular. So on behalf of my staff, the women on my staff who work directly with you on the budget, I wanna say thank you, particularly over the last three years. I know we've had to make some tough decisions. Not, all of them are popular, and they're incredibly difficult, but I think you have definitely paved the way to make sure that Angelinos in this city are protected and that services continue to be delivered for our residents. So I wanna thank you for that, Mr. Krikorian. Again, I don't know how you replace Matt. I don't even wanna even begin to go, I don't, I think you've already had that conversation with your staff or even probably to yourself, but I think you're indispensable. You really have become an incredible treasure and a wealth of knowledge. And so with that, it's a tremendous loss to your office, but I'm glad you're still with our city. I'm glad you're gonna do amazing things across the street, but I'm very lucky to call you my friend. And anything I can ever do in the future, I'm here for you.
The only reason why this isn't a much more hard emotional moment for me is that none of this is a goodbye. I am gonna be right up the hill. I'm gonna be around here an awful lot and working with all of your offices in just a different way now. But I am just filled with immense sets of gratitude for the years that I've been able to serve here and gratitude for all of the trust that you have all placed in me to participate in these monumentally large decisions about really important issues. You know, you get into this job to do this exact work. I got into politics to be in the room making these decisions. So to have gotten here is just a real blessing. So I just wanna say thank you to everyone, and I'm looking forward to working with you in a completely new way now.
Thank you, Matt Hale. And now I will yield the floor to Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues. First of all, just a quick word. Matt, I can't add much to what everybody else has said. You know, I served on the Budget Committee for a long time. You absolutely phenomenal, supportive of everybody. And the thing that amazed me is you're one of the most unflappable people I have ever met. I would hate to play poker against you because, you know, I or Mr. Keretz would say something, and I know that your boss was going nuts, but you stayed still. I'm glad you're staying with the city. Mr. Krikorian, I feel your pain because I'm facing the same situation as you. This is a day I have been dreading a very, very long time, and it doesn't hurt. And it doesn't hurt less just because I only have a few months left in office. I'm saying goodbye today to my advisor, my confidant, my, my, my Chief of Staff, and my longtime friend, Chad Molnar. Chad, get up here. There's a few of us on the council who've been here nine years, and we've been lucky enough to have the same Chief of Staff the whole time. And that's just such an incredible gift and a bond. And Mr. Kerkorian was lucky enough to have had a professional relationship with Matt for 17 years. I've been blessed to have a professional relationship and partnership with Chad for 19 years. In 2003, when I first left the city, I went to work for Congresswoman Jane Harmon, and I was her Deputy Chief of Staff, and the first thing I had to do was hire some district staff. And I had a resume from this kid at the time from Massachusetts, who I don't think had ever lived in Los Angeles. And I was from Massachusetts, so I thought, all right, let's give him a shot. And he flew out, and immediately, it was one of those situations where I just had an intuitive connection, where I knew this kid was smart, I knew this kid got it, and I wanted the ability to work with him. And so he flew down to DC to interview with the Chief of Staff. And Congresswoman Harmon walked by and asked John, the Chief of Staff, who's that? And he said, well, that's somebody Mike wants to hire. And he looks young now, but 20 years ago, he looked even younger. And she said, he's just a baby. We're not hiring him. And I had to fight like hell to hire him, and I eventually succeeded. I think it was the only battle with Congresswoman Harmon I ever won. And he was our deputy for San Pedro and for Wilmington and for Lomita and the Harbor Communities. And after a while, I left to run Bill Rosendahl's City Council campaign. And Chad succeeded me as District Director. And the SOB, as soon as I left, mandated a new dress code in the office. See, you'd like him, Paul. And after I was working for Mr. Rosendahl, we, we wound up creating a new position to deal with LAX. Like the Harbor and CD-15, LAX is a huge asset and is a full-time job. And we created a position of LAX Community Liaison. It had to be somebody who had the same skill sets as a, as a Matt Hale policy acumen, but, but also was really great with community, somebody who had the skill sets of a field deputy. And I knew right away Chad was the guy. So I talked to Bill, and we hired Chad. And he took that position, built incredible relationships with both the airport and with the community, and helped us do amazing things to help get a world-class airport that is a first-class neighbor. When Bill got sick in, in 2012, and I decided to run in 2013, I had to turn to Chad again. I needed somebody to help me and to help run my campaign. Somebody that I could trust implicitly, who, who, who knew me and knew how to manage me. And Chad managed my campaign. And then I got elected, and you know, the biggest choice you face is, who's your Chief of Staff going to be? And I thought back to an episode of The West Wing, where Martin Sheen was talking to the Cabinet Secretary, who was staying away from the Capitol during the State of the Union. And he said, you know, if something happens, if we all blow up, here's some advice. Do you have a best friend? Yes. Is he smarter than you? Yes. Do you trust him with your life? Yes. That's your Chief of Staff. And that was the metric I used in, in choosing my Chief of Staff. And Chad has been at my side every step of the way. For every big accomplishment that we've had, he has been a part of it. I am, I am likely to be remembered more for the controversies I engaged in than anything else, but one of the most significant things that we ever did was settle a generations-long controversy. For decades, generations, there had been a war between LAX and the community. And there were lawsuits that were slowing down modernization, fights between people who saw LAX as an intruding neighbor, and fights between people who knew this is an economic engine vital to Los Angeles. And we managed to broker a settlement that ended the lawsuits and got modernization moving again and got everybody happy. And that, more than anybody else, was Chad, who had the trusting relationships with both the folks at the airport and the folks in the neighborhood, who had patience I do not have with, with detail and with personality to bring everybody together and broker that. The work on the hotel minimum wage and then the $15 minimum wage for my office, that was Chad. The work that we were able to do last year to, to bring 200 people indoors from Venice Beach, over half of them permanently housed today, was because of the stewardship of Chad, pulling together agencies inside and outside of government. We developed a Sunset standard for all the schools and institutions on the heavily trafficked corridor on Sunset to say, you can get a project approved here, but you've got to reduce traffic. That was Chad. Negotiating an historic amount of affordable housing in, in a big transit-oriented development near the Expo line, that was Chad. Building our staff, knitting everybody together, that was Chad. And managing up and controlling me, his power waned over the years, but that was Chad. My, my husband Sean, who couldn't be here today and really, really wishes he were, because Chad is really a member of our family, he often was jealous of Chad's ability to get me to listen and Chad's ability to get me to do things. And he would often, I think, turn to Chad and say, how the hell can I get Mike to, to do something? Chad had an ability that, that, that nobody else has had. Of course, he's known me twice as long as, as Sean had. Chad is more than just my, my, my Chief of Staff and my chief political advisor. He's, he's been my rudder. You know, we had a really great, enjoyable first term, and then in Chad, I don't think took a day off. Shortly after I got reelected, Chad went on vacation for like a month or something like that. While he was gone is when we put in the protected bike lanes and the first recall effort started. So I, I really feel I never would have had a recall if Chad had just never bothered to go on vacation. But Chad, you know, we've, we've spent some holidays together. He was a member of my wedding party. And the, the thing I remember most about Chad isn't the professional stuff. It's 12 years ago, my, my sister died of, of cancer. And it was really ugly and brutal, and I was, she lived back east, and we had a big, big funeral. And I was giving the eulogy, and I looked up, there's a big crowd in the church, and I saw Chad was there. He had, without telling me, booked a flight and at the last minute, hopped across the country and attended my sister's funeral. And it was such a profound and, and loving and supportive gesture. And that's, that's really who Chad is. I mean, he is just a solid, solid stand-up guy, who's, I, I don't know what's bigger, his brain or his heart, but they're both enormous. And the city of Los Angeles and, and I have benefited tremendously as a result of that. He has, however, lost his mind. He, well, the first indication that he lost his mind is he stayed with me for nine years. But the, the second is that he's leaving to go to law school in his 40s. He's leaving, and he's getting on a plane tomorrow, and he's going to New Orleans. And he is going to be a law student at Tulane. And I'm sure he will ace law school, and he will be a kick-ass lawyer who will keep on fighting the good fight. So I am really, really sad to, to see you go. I tend to be pretty stoic, and I don't really talk emotionally very much, but I absolutely love you, and this is like having a sibling move across the country. You get 19 years' worth of rebuttal. Go ahead.
Congratulations, Chad, and we would love to hear from you.
Thank you, thank you. You know, it's hard to follow that. I like to say that Mike just keeps making the same mistake over and over again in hiring me. But, but I'm, you know, I am so grateful, and I've been humbled by that confidence he's placed in me. And, you know, being a Chief of Staff for all these years in this great, amazing city has been the honor of my life. And working with all of you has been the honor of my life. And we've just accomplished some amazing, amazing things together for the people of Los Angeles. And I will be, you know, I'll be watching all of you from, from New Orleans and seeing what we do next. But, you know, thank you for the opportunity and the partnership over the years.
Thank you, Chad, and Godspeed in New Orleans, one of the great American cities. And before we call upon Mr. Blumenfield to honor Gary Lee Moore, are there any other announcements? All right, Mr. Blumenfield, you have the floor.
Great. Well, we're, we're keeping in the same spirit of great people leaving, but building like a crescendo to this moment. You know, we had, we had Matt Hale, who knew Paul for 17 years, Chad, who knew Mike for 19 years. 17 plus 19, that's 36. That's less years than the person I'm about to bring up. And Gary, why don't you come up to the table, has been with this city. It is pretty incredible. Colleagues, today, we pay tribute to an incredible public servant who has dedicated 37 years to serving the Los Angeles, the people of Los Angeles, to this great city. And I'm talking about, of course, our Chief Engineer, Gary Lee Moore. Yes. Gary, Gary started, he joined the Bureau in 1985 as Mechanical Engineering Assistant. 1985, the year I graduated high school, and Mike graduated high school. And some of our colleagues might have been in diapers at that point. You have been with us for a long time, and it's not just about the longevity. It really, you have made an incredible impact. You were first appointed City Engineer in 2003, and his 19 years in that position makes him the second-longest-serving City Engineer in this city's history. That's also an amazing accomplishment. Congratulations on that. Over as many years of service, Gary has overseen the completion of 2,600 projects totaling $7 billion. That's a lot that you've impacted, and a lot of, that's a lot of money. I mean, you know, Trump changed for, for, you know, Facebook or something, but, but for the, for us in, in here, in the real world, that makes a huge difference. Projects included the Sixth Street Viaduct, the largest bridge project in the history of Los Angeles, the Police Administration Building, the Griffith Observatory renovation and expansion project, 2,845 beds of interim housing for those experiencing homelessness, 30 bridges, 22 new fire stations and facilities, 18 new libraries, 15 new police stations, 15 new swimming pools, 200 park projects, seven new animal service centers, 492 projects improving the processes of the city's water reclamation plants, 814 miles of sewer repairs, 125 miles of sidewalk repairs, and so much more. It's incredible to think of, of, of those hands of yours and that mind of yours that has, has shaped this city. There is not a person in Los Angeles who's not benefited from your hard work and dedication. And, and I can say that without reservation, given all of those projects that I mean. Even if you never drive across the Sixth Street Bridge, you have touched their lives in so many ways. As elected officials here, we get to dig the shovels at groundbreakings and cut ribbons when projects are complete. But for the past 19 years, we've really been able to do that because of you. Each of us around this horseshoe has our pet projects that require your particular attention and that we call you up about in the middle of the night when things are falling apart. For me, it was the, you know, the Reseda Ice Rink. It was a specified project in the original Prop K back in, in the 90s. Almost since my election to City Council in 2013, I've been working on that. And you have helped make that into a reality, getting it to this point. The obstacles and hurdles that that project placed are so numerous. And I know that this is what you face with so many projects. It just takes tenacity and, and trying to figure out that way around, that third way, how do we get to yes? And that's what you've been so great at, is when all the world is showing you no's, you're looking for that way to get yes. And, and on that project, just last week, the city finally issued a notice to proceed with construction, which I know is the only reason why you're now able to leave and at the table today, because I would not have let you left until that was done. So thank you. So I know a lot of my colleagues are going to speak as well, so I don't want to go on and on, but I, I could go on for as long as your, the list of your projects, because you've been so amazing. So Gary, on behalf of a grateful city, I want to thank you for your 37 years of service to the people of Los Angeles and wish you and Jinsuk a relaxing and fulfilling retirement. And for whatever else you endeavor to do, we wish you great success. Thank you, thank you, thank you, on behalf of Los Angeles.
So, Mr. Blumenfield, some of us do want to go on and on and on about how incredible Gary Lee Moore is. And we're going to start with Mr. Lee.
Gary, I want to echo the comments that Councilman Blumenfield said. Every major project, you know, I've been in this city for, since 1996. Every major project you've been a part of, and now my time as council member, whether it's shelter, a youth center, whatever it is we're building, you've always been a part of it. And when we run into trouble, like Councilman Blumenfield said, we call you, and somehow you make it happen. You make that problem go away. You solve the problem. You solve the issue, whatever it is that we're facing. You're that person we all have turned to for so many different, so many years. And so we appreciate that, and we appreciate your service to the city of Los Angeles. But mostly, I'm going to miss my friend, Gary Lee Moore. Hopefully, we still, you know, go to rock concerts together. Hopefully, we still go to our yearly Dodger game together to, you know, talk about them. And, you know, hopefully, I still, you know, will have our friend to, to still call on. Maybe not to solve a problem, but maybe just to talk a little baseball and, you know, talk about the world it is. But Gary, thank you so much for everything you've done for the city and for Council District 12.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. De León.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I also want to associate my remarks with our Chair of the Budget Committee, Public Works, I should say, Mr. Blumenfeld, as well as Mr. Lee. Gary Lee Moore, I, I say this, you know, jokingly and so many occasions. The first time I, I heard your name, I thought you were a country singer, you know? Gary Lee Moore, you know? And you are not just the City Engineer, but I often say, you know, not so much jokingly, but affectionately, that you are America's, you know, engineer. Because of the Public Works projects that you have heralded into a new century are unparalleled with any City Engineer throughout the country, including the city of New York, being that we are geographically the largest city in America. We may be number two in terms of population, but we're clearly, easily, number one when it comes to geography. What you have done is, is incalculable. Now, I know that Mr. Blumenfeld went through a whole litany list of major projects, and I won't repeat them. But I will say that, other than the latest Sixth Street project, you also built 30 other bridges, you know, in the city of Los Angeles. And we built together, obviously, the largest tiny home village in the United States of America, I believe, in three months. And we did it because we had that sense of urgency, you know, to get it done, given the humanitarian crisis that is before us today. If there's one thing I, I, I can say openly, now we'll just say it publicly, that, that with regards to Sixth Street Bridge, that I can fault you, is you did not have in mind, you didn't anticipate that someone would be actually giving haircuts in, on the medium, in the middle of the of the bridge, you know? So, I fault BOE, as well as our city engineer, for not having the vision, you know, that LA Times demands requires that you should have anticipated, you know, beforehand. You know, nonetheless, you know, I thank you. What you have done is phenomenal. 2,600 projects totaling over $7 billion. Again, the largest, you know, bridge project of its kind in city's history. In the entire history of LA, there has never been a city engineer who's contributed more to the lives of Angelenos than this man right here, hands down. Some may even say that Gary actually helped rebuild the city of Los Angeles, no doubt. While your amazing career ends here in the city of LA, you walk away with a track record that shows that you've been a proven leader, a dedicated public servant, a champion for our city. We will miss you sorely. Jinsu, I don't know what you're going to do with him, you know, at home, you know? I don't know if it's a good thing for you, you know, but it was remarkable on that Sunday, you know, when we opened up the bridge publicly to all of Los Angeles, that you were on my right, you know, in a different car, cruising in your own low rider, you know? So, folks don't know, you know, our city manager, America's, you know, engineer, was cruising low and slow across that Sixth Street Bridge, you know, as a city engineer. And that was a sight to behold, you know? You were euphoric, enthusiastic, rightfully so. Regardless of the shenanigans that have been happening the past few weeks, that is an amazing project, and we collectively appreciate who you are. Be rest assured that, I know there's a lot of folks around this horseshoe, especially me, we're going to still be calling you, because we need your knowledge, your wisdom. We usher in a new generation of leadership for the engineering position, but we also want to make sure that we continue to lean on someone like you, who have left an indelible mark on the city of LA. Thank you very much. Gracias amigo. Thank you much. Thank you, Mr. Chad.
Thank you, Mr. DeLeón. Ms. Rodriguez.
Gary, I've been dreading this day. Well, I first want to thank you and, of course, your team. I had the tremendous privilege of being able to work very closely with you and your team when I served on the Board of Public Works. And for me, that gives me a lot more benefit than many of my colleagues in terms of our ability to have worked so closely together on so many different projects. And, you know, and I'm glad you're seated for this, because clearly, there's no shortage of things, wonderful things to say about you and your tenure here in the city of Los Angeles. And when I think about people who love this city, and I think about someone like Tom Labange amongst those that love this city, there's probably no one greater public servant who loves this city as much as you do. And I'm just so grateful for your friendship, for your stewardship in this department that touches every part of a city project. You know, I'm not really worried about how engineering survives without you because of the way you led. When I think about, and I've cited you many times, you are the utility knife, you are the, you are a Swiss Army knife of general managers. When there was a vacancy in ITA, we called on you. When there was a vacancy at the port, we called on you. You are the person that is placed into every pivotal role in this city because of your incredible leadership. But you've imparted that in this department, which is allowing you to retire. Because frankly, there are so many individuals that are, you know, that we find vacancies and deep holes in their absence of leadership. You've imparted that wisdom and leadership style to everybody in the Bureau of Engineering, and that's why I know we're going to be okay. And we're going to continue to make great strides in the Bureau of Engineering and in this city, but it's because of your leadership, and it was because of your generous style of sharing that space with your team that we're all better for it. And so, I'm incredibly grateful for all of your service here in the city of Los Angeles. But we've all been tremendous beneficiaries of your friendship as well, and I consider myself included in that, and I'm really grateful. You know, you and I have shared a lot of really fun times, opining very similar thoughts about dynamics in the city. But I'm going to miss you tremendously, but I know that thankfully, we're not losing you as a resident of Los Angeles, even if you're going to take your extended trips into Europe. But thank you for everything that you've done for our great city, for loving the city as much as you do. And while you opened up this bridge, and God willing, you'll be able to drive it still, if they don't permanently keep us off of it. There's just no one like you. There just really is no one like you, and thank you for everything that you've done for us, for our city, for the leadership that you leave behind. I know we're in really wonderful, capable hands, but it's because of you. And, you know, I've shared with many general managers when we've talked about succession planning, and when I think about, man, who could be even potentially an interim mayor? I think Gary Lee Moore. Because you've got the humor, you've got the expertise, you've got the leadership and the dynamic to be able to do all of these things. You're just an incredible public servant, and we are all grateful and better for it. So, congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. You're just a remarkable human being, and thank you for your service.
Gary, the accolades are going to continue with President Nury Martinez.
President, Gary, you've left a tremendous legacy in our city. I think so many of us appreciate the big-ticket items like the Sixth Street Bridge and other projects that you have overseen, but I can certainly appreciate the smaller projects, the thousands of projects that you have overseen, things like sidewalk repairs, street scape improvements that have actually impacted really small neighborhoods. And I appreciate all of that thought and effort into that. I don't think that is ever expressed enough on this council in terms of the little things that you do do and that you do care about. I love and appreciate the fact that you don't sugarcoat anything, and that you're a straight shooter, and I always appreciate that, because I think even when you have to deliver really bad news, or news that is just isn't popular, you do it in such a way where we come away thinking you're right. We have to find a different route to be able to accomplish that. You've delivered high-quality projects on time and on budget, which I certainly appreciate. And I think in speaking to some of your staff, I've heard you've been plotting your retirement with charts and spreadsheets, as if though you're like working on an engineering project. And I thought it was so funny that people have actually seen you plan your retirement. You're so meticulous about every single thing. You have to pretty much put out a chart and a spreadsheet about everything that's going to come due when you're not there. That just shows your dedication and your commitment to your department, so thank you for that. I just wanted to rise and say thank you. I think you are a tremendous, you know, human being. And when you called me in June to tell me you were leaving, I wasn't surprised, but I was actually really happy for you. I think you've dedicated, you've served this city well, you've served our residents really well, and you deserve your time with your family and your wonderful wife. I just want to say thank you and enjoy your retirement, my friend. You've earned it.
And now, we have Mr. Sadio.
There's a great book about urban life called The Power Broker. It's the story of Robert Moses in New York. You are greater than Robert Moses from New York, because your accomplishments that have been delineated, but more so because your greater commitment to public service. Since the first day I met you, discovered you were a Bruin, I knew that what distinguished you with your incredible talent was that you are the consummate public servant, that you could be doing so much more other places, you could be making so much more money other places, but that your commitment has been to serve the city. And as Monica said, you are the Swiss Army knife. You can do it all and do it well. And you are that utility player. You are that person who fits in. You are the consummate team player. Your relationship with the mayor, with the leadership of this council, with this council, with every department, every place we've been, you're there providing the necessary leadership that's for the moment. And so, it's been an honor. I shared my feelings with you personally. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you. It's part of the greatness of the city, and I cannot thank you enough on behalf of my constituents, because we've done great things. We've cut a lot of ribbon, we've turned a lot of ground, and we've got a lot to show for it, and it's remarkable. And us coming from Sacramento, we're broad-brush painters. We didn't understand the details, the nuance, the fine tuning that took place in the city. But from you, we were able to learn that, and for that, we will be forever indebted. And this city will be forever indebted for all that you've done, more than the aggregate of us. So, thank you, my brother. God bless you and your family. Love you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio, and Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gary, I guess we all knew this day would come, but all of us hated the idea of it. Let me start by thanking you for all the many years of work and planning that you put into the half-billion-dollar investment for the Sixth Street setting for TikTok videos. It is a very important contribution to the city, and we want to thank you for that. But seriously, we're living in a time now in this country where the people who tear things down get attention. The people who, you know, are critical of what government does get attention. And the builders don't get enough attention. The people who create things that make life better and safer and healthier and more livable for our city and for people across the country are often doing that work without a lot of limelight, without a lot of attention. And I think that there is no person that more exemplifies that in our city than you, because every single good thing that any of us on the council accomplish, somehow or another, goes across your desk. And there have been times when we have shook our heads together and said, why is it that we can't do this exactly? And you've always, you know, been there to try to figure out a way to get to how we can do it, how we can, you know? And that's what engineers do, they solve problems. And there's been no better problem solver in our city than you. And anybody who works for the city for a while will be able to point to things that they've accomplished. But in this extraordinary career that you've had, extraordinary career, you forever and, you know, three, four generations from now, your descendants and your, you know, people will remember the work of Gary Lee Moore when they drive around this city. And essentially, in essentially every neighborhood of this city will be able to point to things and said, life is better because of what Gary Lee Moore did right there. We are safer because of what Gary Lee Moore did over there. It's an extraordinary legacy. In my own district, the work that we did together on, you know, creating the tiny home vill, the template for the tiny home villages, it was the first one in my district, the Homeless Navigation Center, first one in the city. You know, the council president mentioned the sidewalk repairs. You know, these are something that everybody thinks, excuse the pun, is a very pedestrian kind of job, but it's very complicated. And it's, we've made an investment of, you know, nearly a billion dollars over the next several decades in a comprehensive sidewalk repair program that you've been, you know, the tip of the spear in implementing. The work that you've done around the LA River and bringing it to life, our parks investments, the substantial investment that we made this year in increasing funding for parks, maintenance and construction, that you've, you know, been central to, and especially our Prop K projects. And the steps forward that we're taking now in building decarbonization, where Los Angeles is setting the example for the rest of the nation in trying to figure out how we make our built environment better for our long-term environment and how we reduce our carbon footprint. That's all, all of that and so much more has been stuff that you have humbly and without fanfare just made happen. And you're a rare talent, you're an extraordinary human being, you're a great friend of all of us, and you've left an extraordinary legacy that Ted will have a challenge, but I know he's up for the challenge, because you've trained your folks and mentored your folks so well, and I know that Ted will do a great job. But we will miss you, Gary, personally and professionally as you leave here. I just hope that you'll take full advantage of your retirement, that you, when you travel, you'll always find a McDonald's to eat at, that you'll never, that you'll never have to be exposed to new Nordic cuisine or anything weird like that. You got your nuggets, you got your fries, you're good to go, and I want to, you know, wish you all the best, and to your family for many happy and successful years in retirement as well.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to everybody who shared about Gary. I haven't had the privilege of knowing you as long and as deep as many of the folks, but we've done a lot of great work together, and certainly, projects all over the city are a testament to your skill, your acumen as an engineer and as a leader of a team of engineering. The thing that I would rise to point out that has always stuck out to me about you is oftentimes, we think of people who are superior technicians and superior builders. We think of them as disconnected from everyday people. And I was always moved in every interaction that I ever had with you, your deep, abiding, and unyielding love for the people, and insistence and belief that every Angeleno deserves the best projects possible to build in their communities. And so, I want to make sure I bear witness to that today. I can remember, we opened up a swimming pool that had been closed for 15 years, could have easily left it closed, as you remember, there were more excuses than we could count for not opening the pool back up. And I remember being with you, and you were standing next to Mike Scholl at that pool, and we cut the ribbon, and the kids ran and jumped in that pool, and I think it took everything in your soul not to jump in with them, because you were so excited that here in the heart of South Los Angeles, they had a world-class, Olympic-grade swimming pool for everyday kids in the neighborhood, who will never know your name, never know my name, never know the name of the dozens of engineers that did the work. They will wake up in the morning and know that they can walk to the park and swim in a first-class pool. And so, we are very, very grateful to you, and I will say that you deserve a place in the Los Angeles Hall of Fame. You built a bridge so beautiful that a family decided they should block it off and hold their quinceañera there. So, there's, not many people can say that they've built a stage so fabulous. Thank you so much, Gary.
Thank you, Ms. Harris-Dawson, and Mr. Corretz.
Terrible. Everybody said just about everything you could possibly say and more, so I could just say what they said. But I have to say, you have had more impact than almost anybody else I can think of on this city. Every single neighborhood, every single district, anywhere throughout the city, your imprint is there. And as Mr. Harris-Dawson noted on one of his projects, there are people all over the city bureaucracy that have found reasons why things couldn't move forward, and you were never one of them. You were always someone that looked at every angle, and how can we make this happen? And so much of what has happened in the city is because of you and because of that attitude. I hope that all the people that follow you will keep that attitude in mind and try to be mentored by that thought. You're also just a great guy, and everybody loves you on the council, everyone that's had any dealings with you. And while we're all sorry to see you go, we know it's good for you, and we... And while we're all sorry to see you go, we know it's good for you, and we wish you well and all the best, and just can only be so grateful for everything that you've done for the city of Los Angeles.
And Gary, before I turn it back over to Bob, I just have a few things to say myself. I've known you for 19 years and 10 months. I met you in September of 2002. I remember it like it was yesterday, at Eric Garcetti's field office there on Sunset Boulevard at Golden Gate. And we had a morning breakfast, and you attended the morning breakfast just to talk about, you know, the issues. And you were so incredibly affable and so available, and showed such good humor at 7:30 a.m. And I set to work on the council member's behalf on all things L.A. River. And over the next 19 years, you and I bonded over so much of that. And I consider you a friend. Everything that has been so exquisitely described about the qualities of who you are, your abilities, your personality, et cetera, it's all been said beautifully. And so I echo everything that's been said around this horseshoe. I just want to say, I think also, we can't forget how important a sense of humor is, and you have a great sense of humor. We've shared so many laughs, and it really, I think, allows us to not take things so seriously. And it also really helps with our longevity and keeping us loose and creative and enjoying ourselves with our work. And when you enjoy what you do, the result is joyful. And I think that can be seen through your legacy of all these incredible projects that have been described. And not to mention what a great leader you are, because all of the fine women and men sitting around behind you I've worked with, and you have an incredible, an incredible department of talented, devoted, compassionate professionals that bring their best every day and their talents to bear because of your leadership. And so I just wanted to throw my two cents in, as a friend, as an admirer, and you so deserve a wonderful retirement, and I'm sure we'll continue to lean on you for just all of the institutional knowledge and the wise counsel that we're going to need moving forward. So, thanks for everything, Gary. As a friend, you've made such an incredible impact on all of us, me personally as well. You are, to me, the city family. You define what the city family is, and that's quite a great ideal and a great example for all of us to aspire to and to live up to. And so with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Blumenfield for a close.
I want to make sure Gary gets the last word, so I'm going to say something. Well, first off, you know, the requirement, we have to do at least a minute for every year that you've been with the city, so we've vastly exceeded the 37 minutes representing your 37 years, so I don't need to go on and on and fill the space. I do want to say, though, we have this wonderful certificate. I know you're surprised, you've never seen one of these before, but we have this great certificate for you, signed by the mayor, all the council members. When council's over, we'd love for you to come to the back room and take a photo with us, and then also to announce that there is a, the celebration will continue on the forecourt, where there was food and festivities, so I urge all the members to come out afterwards. And I just wanted to let you close and say the words that you want to say. You get the last word, you can tell all of us to go wherever, and I'll turn it over to you, Gary.
Gary Lee Moore.
As you all know, I didn't do anything. It's all the employees of the Bureau of Engineering, and I'm just so blessed that there are so many here today to be here. Those compliments are all for them. They work so hard, they've worked through the pandemic, they've worked through recessions, and I can't tell you, my wife will tell you, I wake up happy every day because I'm going to work. And I love these people. They're just so dedicated, so committed, so smart, and it just makes every day a joy. And I say to all of you as elected officials, your job is incredibly challenging. And I always had in my heart was, "How can I help you? How can I help you?" Because you represent this fantastic, diverse city. And today I was thinking through, and I go, you know, Council President Martinez, Fire Station 39, would not take any baloney. There, I cleaned it up, baloney. Yeah, yeah. Councilman Sadio in Lincoln Pool, and with the celebration we had out there. And Councilman Krikorian mentioned Chandler, the first tiny home, and I had to give him, I almost had to give him, go to the city administrative office to give him a PM, a project manager bonus, we were together so much out there. It was incredible, but that's reflective of everybody here. Councilman Blumenfield, Woodland Hills and your construction hat, you were out there making sure we got that open for the summer, and thank you for that. Councilmember Rahm, the Wings of Mexico, and your willingness to, "How can we be more creative? How can we deliver that?" And it's another special place there at Griffith Observatory. Councilman Corretts and the Westwood Greenway Project, and your passion about water quality, it's so important. Councilmember Rodriguez, we've done many projects, but I think the one that I picked today was the Terabella Street Project, and I know council president talked about it. Those small projects that mean so much to a community that didn't have sidewalks in that area, so thank you. Councilman Harris-Dawson, Destination Crenshaw, unbelievable, this community investment that you're leading and bringing the funding and so forth. I believed when you said, "We need money," and you've gone out and gotten it. Councilman Price, who's not here today, but South Park, you know, it's such an historic park and to that community and what it means. Councilman Bonin and the Argo Water Recharge Facility, and it's champion of the water quality in the city. Councilman Lee, we just opened up the Partini Home Project for bringing people that were homeless into shelters. And your friendship throughout the times, I just value so much, and as a diehard Dodger fan. Councilman O'Farrell, so many projects, but one that I think exemplified your leadership for your community was the Red Car Bridge. You know, when we walked across that and just hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of your community there celebrating, and of course, the L.A. River leadership. Councilman DeLeon, what project should I talk to you about here? Yes, the Sixth Street Viaduct. 99.9999999, people are good, and they're enjoying the heck out of that new amenity. And I can't thank Los Angeles, and I believe in the Angelinos. They are unbelievable, and we will not let a few people destroy what everybody deserves, which is the best. Councilman Buscagno, Machado Lake Project, what a project. The water quality, the investment in that park, I thank you. It seems just like yesterday when my wife, Jinsuk, and I were over at the Getty House for a function, and I was not city engineer, and Natalio Reyes was a deputy to Mayor Hunt, said he'd like to speak to you in Getty House. And he called me, and my wife is going to come, and he said, "No, we just want to talk to Gary." I said, "Uh-oh, I'm in trouble." And that's when he offered me the job to be city engineer. It was such a special moment to share. And then Mayor Villarogosa, he kept me. I applied and he kept me, and we dreamt together and we worked together, and I always will thank him. And then Mayor Garcetti, I've known him for 19 years, and he also, after reapplying, let me stay and gave me incredible opportunities, and I appreciate his leadership. Once again, it's about an incredible executive team, and I benefited for, as you've all mentioned, longevity, and you've met them all, because I believe in them all. I trusted them all. It wasn't about me being everywhere, it was about them. I explained to all new hires, council offices have about 20 people that work for them. Do you think the council members don't know what's going on? Every morning they meet with the staff, they know you are the Bureau of Engineering. They know, they think of the Bureau of Engineering because of you. And I've had this incredible current executive team of our chief deputy city engineer, Deborah Weintraub, deputy city engineers Ted Allen, Alfred Mata, Julie Sauter, Jose Fuentes, our chief management analyst, Robert Kotamatsu, and our community affairs advocate, Mary Nemec, that make up the current executive team. And I have four deputy mayors and one chief, oh, three deputy, three deputy mayors, sorry, mayors, sorry. Three deputy city engineers and one chief deputy city engineer have joined us today. Vince Jones, the first African-American deputy city engineer, Ken Redd, deputy city engineer, and Mahmud Karimzadeh. And a special thank you to my mentor who stayed on, chief deputy city engineer Brad Smith. I want everybody, raise your hand, Brad. Thank you. We all know we have great people that help us on a daily basis, and I want to say a very special thank you to my executive administrative assistant, Antonia Barrios, who's always cheerful when I, yes. There she is. Who's always cheerful when I call her at 7:05 a.m. every weekday morning. I don't call her on the weekends, but yes, every weekday. And to my fellow general managers, the cooperation they've shown, the ability to pick up the phone and they say yes. And I know a few are here, but I definitely, I want to thank Sharon So, the chief legislative analyst. You've been just a great, great partner in all these fantastic projects. Thank you, Sharon. And I want to acknowledge my dear friend and just somebody who I spend a lot of time with, and that's the inspector of Public Works, John Reamer. John, please stand up. Just a few more comments. It's all about the people. I've benefited the most from the unbelievable support of the city employees, the consultants, the contractors, and the residents of Los Angeles. I love community meetings, and I know some of them can be challenging. But I tell you, when you're able, again, to listen to the heart of what they're saying, and you go back and incorporate that, you come back with a better project. And I've always tried to instill that in our team. Listen, don't get upset that they were screaming. What were they screaming about? And how can we incorporate that? How can we make it better? So, thank you to all of them for participating. You know, three things have kind of guided me in my management style, and one of it, my terms is humans. Not a spreadsheet, not a PowerPoint, not, you know, a magical group of people, but which human is doing something? And never forget, we all have different civil service titles, but we all have the same family challenges and losses, and so it was always something very important to me. And then the Bible verse, Matthew 7:12, that says, "Do to others what you would have them do to you." And I always tried to practice it. I didn't always achieve it, but I always tried to aspire to it. And then my third one is Satchel Paige, one of the greatest, greatest pitchers in the history of Major League Baseball. And I grew up in Linwood, and I learned about diversity in Linwood, and I know it's a strength. There's nothing better than diversity. There's, it brings so much joy to everything you do. Unfortunately for Satchel Paige, because of prejudice, he wasn't allowed to pitch in the major leagues till he was 42. But he had a saying, "Don't look back, something might be gaining on you." And it's never to, when somebody is ill-will to you, just hope they have a better day and go forward. And I've always just tried to channel that, that I feel for them. And finally, the best thing that ever happened to me in the city of Los Angeles, it's easy to tell you, it's one thing, and that was meeting my wife, Jinsuk. She is my best friend. She is my best friend, she's the smartest person I know. Without her, I would never have applied for the job as city engineer and certainly would not have been able to serve for 19 years. She's always been there to listen, encourage, and challenge me to be better. I'm so excited about the next chapter of our life. It's been an honor of a lifetime to work for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
I'm going to recommend that we do one of those photos around behind the table with Gary and his lovely wife sitting at the table, and we can all fill in behind them.
Thank you. Colleagues, that concludes announcements. Do we have any adjourned motions today? Any adjourned motions, please all arise. And we will begin with Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Mr. President, members, I ask that we join in an adjournment of today's meeting for Pasadena City Council member, Mr. John J. Kennedy, who passed away July 21st of this year. He was first elected to the Pasadena City Council in 2013 and proudly chaired the Public Safety Committee there and served on the Finance Committee as well. He was formerly vice mayor of the city of Pasadena and had just recently been reelected just a month before his passing. Mr. Kennedy was born and raised in Pasadena, California, attended Blair High School, and later attended the University of Southern California, where he served on the Student Government Association. He earned his bachelor's degree at Howard University in Washington, D.C., came back home and became the youngest person ever elected to the Pasadena, or to serve as the president of the Pasadena branch of the NAACP. Throughout his career, he, not just for the city of Pasadena, but for Southern California more broadly, dedicated himself to the betterment of the quality of life for all people, but especially for African-American communities around the county and around Southern California. And he boasted- And he boasted quite possibly the best name you can have to run for elected office and flaunted it wildly. He will be deeply missed, not only in the city of Pasadena, but by all of us here in the city of Los Angeles and around Southern California. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Any other adjourned motions today? Seeing as there are none, go forth and have a, yes? We do have one? Oh, Mr. DeLeon.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you very much, Mr. President, as well as colleagues. It's with tremendous sadness that I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Ricardo Fleming Monroy, who passed away on July 4th, 2022, at the very young age of 59. Born on March 18th, 1963, right in Echo Park in CD 13, at the now-closed Queen of the Angels Hospital. Ricardo was the proud son of Antonio H. Monroy and Betty Fleming Monroy, the third of four siblings. Ricardo grew up in the southeast city of Bell. And he was also incredibly proud of his parents. His father immigrated to the United States from Mexico through the Bracero Program. And his mother came to this country from Ecuador, Equamex, if you will, de cotoriano y mexicano. Growing up, Ricardo was a stellar athlete from a young age, playing Little League baseball. And in high school, he found his calling and actually became a swimmer and soon thereafter, an ocean lifeguard. And that's very rare, you know. I don't see a lot of Latinos or African-Americans or Asian-Americans, you know, who are either swimmers or lifeguards. So it's a very rare occurrence, even in a city as diverse as L.A. with the beach right next to us and with pools primarily, you know, located in one geographical area of Los Angeles. But he broke the mold, without a doubt. Being a lifeguard gave him a stable job and a love he would pursue for the next 30 years of his adult life. Ricardo graduated from Bell High School and went to Cal Berkeley, where he received his degree in Chicano Studies and Political Studies. At Cal, he was on the water polo team and a member of Theta Chi Chi fraternity. After leaving college, he returned home and started working in the political arena. He also worked for the Los Angeles County Ocean Lifeguard Association when he helped pass legislation in Sacramento to secure additional funds for L.A. County ocean lifeguards and extra protections from skin cancer for the women and men in the profession. He also worked with the California Democratic Party under the leadership of former state Senator Art Torres for many years. In his role, he helped many candidates over the years, including our very own, Los Angeles City Council member Gil Sadio from City One, former L.A. Mayor Antonio Villarigosa, and many members of the California State Legislature. He could outsmart just about anyone and he knew how to connect with people. He also served the many residents of Council District 14 over several years as a staff member with several predecessors. He was a strong advocate to recruit more Spanish-speaking ocean lifeguards. In fact, the L.A. County Lifeguards Association recognized him for the valor award for his outstanding public service. Ricardo also received the Bronze Savage Award for his dedication and excellent 30-year public career in public safety. Ricardo will forever be missed by all he impacted in his life, especially his many swimming friends and all of his political friends. He survived by his loving family, his sister Betty Monroy, his brother Tony, his wife Anna, along with Pablo Monroy, Adriana Esparza. He leaves behind eight beautiful nieces and nephews, including Brianna, Eliana, Tony, Amanda, Willie, Melina, Josh, Nick, and Dominic, not to mention countless friends. Ricardo loved his family and his family loved him. He'll be sorely missed, my friend. Keep swimming until we meet again. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. DeLeon and Mr. Seville.
This morning, I received a phone call from my chief of staff, Dan Savage. We served together 20-plus years. I've had three chief of staffs in my 31 years of public service. Dan called this morning because he wanted to make sure that we shared our comments with our experience with Ricardo. We met him in the early 90s when we were with SCIU Local 660 and he represented the lifeguard union. You know, Ricardo was an amazing, imposing figure. Tall, dark, handsome, I'll say that now. Really, obviously physically fit because he was a lifeguard. And the thing that was amazing was, and Dan called to make sure we noted this this morning, is that he was so helpful and so pleasant. And just like if you're in a campaign or if you're, whether it's an electoral campaign or a campaign against budget cuts or advocacy for legislation, when Ricardo showed up, you knew there was going to be someone who was going to be helpful. He would do anything, you know, take out the trash, you know, be strategic, help you strategize, help you figure out how to move the agenda. And he was so pleasant. I mean, Ricardo's the type of guy, if you had to go on a long drive, like you would go with him. And he would either drive or ride with you. If you needed to move, he would be there to help you move. He did those types of things for you. He was a really good friend to so many people, just a solid. And so it was always great to see him. And whenever he came around, you knew that it was something about good trouble, that he was just positive in whatever was going on. And he was proud of being from the southeast and his southeast roots, but he was beyond that. And he was really a leader. Part of the kind of tribe, if you will, of Art Torres and all those people that worked for Art Torres, smart, intelligent, and committed to service. And so it's really tragic that he's not going to be here. He was on the floor with us recently. And then not to have him here is just tragic. He's one of those persons you just assume you're always going to see and he's going to be around and it's going to be pleasant. And it's just a tragedy, that's all I can say. It's a shock. And we've all had so much shock and loss during the pandemic and during these difficult times. And then this just adds to that. And so on behalf of what we call Team Sadio and my chief, Dan Savage, and our community, because he was with us in my campaigns and then in my first campaign, he was there to help me get elected. We will miss him. We send our love and our condolences to the family, but also to the community of leaders here in the county of Los Angeles and the Southern California area because we will miss him sadly at a time we truly need him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeLeon and Mr. Sadio. Are there any other adjourned motions today?
Thank you for doing this.
All right. Every day is a gift. Let's have safe, wonderful weekends. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.